Is this it? She's asleep. She's asleep.
Here. Yeah. Yep.
Good lady. Here. Here. Beth, please do the fire exit.
Yes, XSR and me back at the theater.
Please stand for the sign for the retired in 1982. After 34 years as a local teacher at Beacon School and first time to retire as a former local teacher at Beacon School in 1982. Thank you. Thank you for coming. I don't see anyone in the audience. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like... Are you here asleep? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to introduce myself.
Sorry, I can't say anything.
That's okay.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Oh, really? Good, thanks.
I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself for those of you that do not know me. Put a face with the name, I guess. My name is Christina Dahl. I have taken over as the BTA president here in the Beacon City School District. I'm excited for the opportunity and the challenges that come along with the position. Just a little bit about myself. I grew up in Beacon. I'm a lifelong Beacon resident. I currently reside in Beacon with my family. I'm fortunate to not only teach in the district but live in the district and the community that is just awesome. I've been teaching at Beacon High School for the past 18 years. I teach history. I've been an advisor. I've been a coach. I have recently been a BTA junior rep. And I just look forward to the opportunity to be the BTA president. I hope to foster a collaborative, positive working relationship with the Board of Education as well as administration, faculty, staff, and the community. So I look forward to working with you and I look forward to a brand-new, hopefully, a wonderful start to our new school year. Thank you.
We are also looking forward to a positive, collaborative relationship with you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a call? Moving on to our workshop. We have the end of the evening. Looking good, guys. Good evening, everyone. So for members of the board in public, the tax warrant is on the agenda tonight, so I just wanted to go over a couple of slides just to explain where we are. We're going to ask the board to go around the same area. So just a reminder, when we head down the budget, our levy increase for the budget this year is 2.35%, which is at the tax cap. And we go through a big calculation with the tax cap, but this is less than last year, so we were thankful to get a little bit more state aid going forward. So again, this is just a reminder, but items that impact the tax cap calculation. So for Beacon, the tax-based growth factor has been a very important measure. It allows us to have the tax levy grow based on physical and finally changes, so capital improvements in construction. So we were able to raise the levy by $487,000. That is less than it has been. We've been going around $600,000. So we anticipate that it will eventually even out at this and maybe continue to go down going forward. So we want to just keep an eye on that going on for the next couple of years. The lower growth factor is really where everyone talks about the 2% of the levy. It's really the lesser 2% for the CPI, consumer price index. So the rate for last year is 1.23%. Again, it doesn't allow you to increase the levy that much. That's something that's across all the districts statewide. And again, the last reminder is that we were able to allocate $2.45 million of excess fund balance and reserves to keep the levy at the tax cap. So changes in assessment. This is always such an interesting slide because we never know kind of where it goes. So first, let me say that most people that we talk to who've gotten the taxpayers calling the district is everyone who's very concerned about the assessments being raised. And so we had some conversations with both the town of Fishville and Beacon. And on average, between 5, 6, and 7% across the board, everyone's assessment went up, right? So everyone's considering that they're going to pay more on school taxes and they're all very nervous about it. But when you're looking at this slide, you're seeing these are what the assessment percentage increases actually are. So for Beacon, it's 15.4%. So that does not mean that everyone's assessment went up 15%. It also meant that we had some properties come on the tax roll. So why is that important? That means there's more properties to spread the levy to, which is good for the taxpayers. Fishville and Wapageur just went up 7.8, 8.6, again, a little bit more. So some of the properties came on the tax rolls as well. But Beacon does truly represent what is going on in the city of Beacon going forward. So how does that really help the taxpayers? So the tax rates, and I'm sorry if it's dark on the top, but for 2022, the tax rate per thousand homesteads, which is for the people that are residents, has actually decreased, which is a great thing for the taxpayers of Beacon, Fishville, and Wapageur. So remember, the tax levy stays the same. That's what everybody looked it on in med of what the levy would be. But when we start spreading it out amongst the taxpayers, you're going to start seeing a decrease, and I'll talk about that in a little while. Non-homestead also decreased. So non-homestead means businesses. Because of the old addition of property that came on the homestead side, it actually helped the non-homestead or the business side in all humanist counties. So tax rate comparison. I use 2015, 16 because that's when we were at our highest over the last couple of years. So we were at 16.500%. So that's per thousand tax rate. We're down to 14.64. So we've been progressively going decreasing from 2015, 16 to last year. Last year, we actually had a little bit of an increase because the assessments didn't go up that much, and now we're back down to a lower amount. So this slide just kind of gives you a comparison that we aren't where we were in 2015, 16. That was so much lower. So just to give you an idea, in the city of Beacon, again, I go to the median house value. So the median house value kind of fluctuates. We use 29500. It's pretty close to there, although some assessments have gone way up. You still have some that are on the lower end. So if you use the average, I'm sorry, the median assessed value of a house of 29500 with the star exemption, and you know the star exemption goes down a little bit every year, the taxpayer will actually have a decrease of $225, which is absolutely wonderful news. Town of Fishville, using their average assessment with stars, a decrease of 269. And Wapageur's with median assessed value of 35500 with stars, a decrease of 291. So this is a direct, so basically, this is a direct correlation between the amount of properties that were actually spreading the levy over from one year to another year. So that's a brief overview. Does any of the board members have any questions?
Can you tell how our tax rate compares to other counties in or within Duchess County?
So our tax rate is on the lower end of the 13 school districts in Duchess County. I think last year, we were either, we were like 11 or 12. So we are extremely low in comparison. So that actually keeps the taxes down. It actually does fund the budget. But sometimes when we're compared to other districts, it's hard to do a comparison because their tax rates, especially the larger districts above them, like Wapageur's, back in the day, even though small, their tax rates are much higher.
Good. I think there's still, there's some people whose taxes bill low up on there. So can you talk about a little bit more why that would happen?
If their assessment was raising more than what the average would be, so across the board, if we raised the assessments by 5 or 6%, and someone's assessment actually was increased by 10%, then they will see us to walk into seeing their tax level. So if you talk about averages across the board, so for most individuals, they will see a reduction in their taxes. But there are specific circumstances where people actually have an increase of their assessments were based on what the average was across the board.
And this is for the tax rule that we're going to be doing?
Yes. So the board is going to go over the tax warrant, and then the bills will start going up beginning of September. So let's stay on 2021, 22 school year. And we will put some more information out on the website. Last year, we had to do some in-person collection at Central Office, which looks like we might have to do that again. So we'll be pretty clear about hours and times that people can come. The bank is not really willing to take our taxes. You know, we have a lockbox, which is wonderful. Most taxpayers use that. We wanted to put a warrant on this board agenda just to give people a little more time to get the bills out and set the dates of that.
Right. So here's how we can go to MTC, not last year, and again, this is...
Right. As far as we're, we were told initially that they could not go to MTC. We're still in negotiations with them. We're hoping that they change their mind because it's more of essentially a located place. If that doesn't happen, we're planning to extend the hours a little bit more at Central Office just to give people a little bit more handle on the first 30 days of collection.
Yes, we're following up on that. With MTC, that's just one of a number of banks that realize that we do most of our business with, right?
Yes.
But what about other banks? Are there any structures that could be made to other banks? Is it a convenience to have it on both or where you can drop it off?
We...
Or is there a concern? I mean, are they not making money on this or what?
I don't believe that's the concern. I mean, I think COVID has really, you know, people are trying to decrease the amount of traffic that's coming in and out. I can't really speak to that in their reason. We could look into other banks. We do have to make sure that the bank has a lockbox facility, which they have in Health Club. It would not be advantageous for us to collect all taxes at the board office. We do it, you know, if you want to pay cash, you know, you can't send cash to the lockbox, obviously, through the mail. But it's a very small amount that we actually collect at the board office. Most of the payments are done. We could not possibly collect, you know, at Central Office. But we can look into other banks, especially if they have a lockbox component.
I know you can still be paid by mail, right?
Correct. You can mail us, and it'll have other information on the bill. You know that actually to the lockbox, they collect all the payments. They transfer the money down to us, and they actually help us report all of that who are county software.
Well, how many transactions or parcels are there in the whole district?
Oh, you're asking a harder question. I don't know that off the top of my head. I've been really happy to share that with the board, or I don't know it. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for me? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Any other questions to refer to the consent agenda to be administered to the individuals in this special part of the association? This is the best situation. So... Bye. Thanks for that, guys. All things good. Um, thank you. Here, I have to say, so you're looking at the future of that now.
Agenda, there are a couple of changes on the consent agenda. Item 12.04, 12.04B4, 12.04H2, 12.04I4, and I6, and 12.04Q1. And then the consent agenda items 1210 and 1211 have been removed. And consent agenda item 1212 addition agreement with the interim principle. Are there any school or student presentations or parent groups?
So, nice. Your report?
So, um, I think we're going to go through these pretty quickly. We did a Zoom Town Hall on Thursday of last week. We had a really great turnout. About 170, 180 people were on. A lot of questions. We tried to get through a lot of questions. We had, I think, about 80 questions. I'm not sure I answered all 80, but I did my best. So I'm just going to really quickly go through this, just so it's our school opening plan, at least for right now. It's a matter of public record for the board. Is the clicker working? Or is it the other one? Next slide. All right, and you can go to the next slide.
I'm trying to move it a little bit.
Okay. Perfect. All right. We're going to start right here. So just cutting to the chase, we have received advice from both the New York Department of Health and the New York State Education Department to follow, this is advice, to follow the CDC school opening guidelines for the upcoming year, which means we will begin the year with universal masking. And so that means masking for all staff and students regardless of vaccination status. I know this is sort of an unfolding, if that's the right word, issue in New York State. We do not have a statewide mask policy for schools. Many other states do. Although I am seeing now counties weighing in. I think counties on the other side of the river, Ulster. Looks like Ulster and Orange are making pretty clear recommendations to the school districts for universal masking. That has not happened in Duchess as of yet. However, looking at this guidance and the data, the COVID data is something that we look at really on a daily basis. We also have weekly meetings with the Duchess County Health Department. We feel that this is the way, the key way for us to start this school year. So why universal masking for all staff and students, at least for the start of the year? Based on community transmission, the CDC highly recommends it in Duchess County. They have, you can look up your county on the CDC website on any given day. Proper masking allows us to reduce the number of staff and students who have to quarantine through contact tracing. CDC has in their latest guidance that people correctly wearing a mask outside of three feet away of the contact, that they most likely would be exempt from quarantining. That's along with people who are vaccinated. Our hope is to really lower the number of students and staff who have to quarantine this year. Our youngest students have not had access to the vaccine yet. Masking helps us allow students and staff to return to school. All students, that missed the key word there. And then just, you know, masks will not be required outside as we did at the end of the last school year, and students will be given mask breaks. And then lastly, we will evaluate this policy throughout the year. I'm not putting a timeline on that right now because I'm kind of waiting to see if something comes from the state or the county on that, but it is something that we will look at. And again, we really welcome guidance from health departments, either state or county. But again, these reasons, I think, give us the strongest effort or the strongest ability to open for all students or nearly all. So just, I'm going to go through some other quick things that the CDC has asked us to focus on. Vaccines at this time are not mandatory for students or staff. Vaccine requirement for students would not be our decision. That would be a state decision. That comes from the State Department of Health. I don't really foresee that happening probably for quite some time. You are starting to hear across the country about vaccine mandates for staff. This came up in the Town Hall, and my answer to that was I would think that that would need to come from the state level. You do have, New York City has made a, I think it's a vaccine or test weekly mandate. I'm not aware of any individual districts outside of the city in New York State that are doing that yet, but that is an issue that is unfolding. One thing to keep in mind with that, that any sort of either vaccine or test regularly component, we would have a staff, would be a change and can, a change in the terms and conditions of their job. So it would be something that would be subject to negotiation. We will work on holding vaccination clinics. We're not sure what the need is. I mean, we obviously would love to boost the vaccine rate for our older students, but we're not sure a clinic is the right way to do it. But we will be working with either the Health Department or other folks to help us with that. And just also, please consider getting vaccinated if you are eligible. Helps the cause. All right, ventilation, this was something that we put a lot of emphasis on here in Beacon. It is one of the key factors in what they call air mitigation. Each classroom in its unit ventilator has some R13 filter. We also added a portable HEPA filter to each classroom as well. That's a pretty high standard. I think we were doing more with that than most other districts, and we really see it as a key aspect to a full return to school. Health screening, we are going to continue with the daily health screener. We need to, and we need to, COVID coordinators need to work on probably using a slightly different format for this year. But we do think it's really important as we are entering some serious COVID fatigue. And trust me, I get it. But we really need to keep working with families that if you are showing symptoms, that you need to stay home until you get checked out by a doctor. We are going to discontinue temperature screening. It's not really seen as an effective way to screen, so we are discontinuing that. We were one of the few people who did it last year anyway. Distancing, CDC recommends three feet distancing in schools with mask masks, so that is what we will do. Breakfast and lunch, essentially, this is something that each individual school is working on plan. I say that because each school is a little bit different. For instance, Glendale has a really big cafeteria. They're going to be able to space their kids appropriately and get most of them in there at different shifts. Some of our other elementary schools may have some students eating in the classroom, some eating in the cafeteria. Middle school is going to do like a sort of a shift schedule for lunch to reduce the number of students in the cafeteria. Both the middle and the high school are also going to try to use outdoor eating as much as possible. COVID testing, that is also voluntary. We can't just test a student without a parent signing off on it. However, there is federal money for testing, and it's being funneled through counties. And so we will be trying to work with Duchess County to get some sort of testing program going. My concern with that is the fatigue factor that people, a lot of folks are really wanting to kind of move on and may not be buying into that as much. But it looks like the county Health Department will want to partner with us on that. And then, last but not least, remote education. I think this one is really important and it's important to talk about. So the State Education Department is not requiring districts to provide remote education. So that's really important. We are no longer required to just provide it for anyone who asks. Last year, we were. This year, we are not. The overall emphasis from the CDC, the American Pediatric Association, the New York State Department of Health, the New York Education Department, all want districts emphasizing a full return to in-person education for students. Okay? So this priority really comes from the top, so to speak. If you look at it from a governmental perspective and sort of comes down to us, it's also what we value as well. We also are taking a position as a district, as most are. I think that having teachers focus on two groups of students, one at home and one in person. We did our best with it last year, but we'd really like our teachers focusing on the students in front of them. So however, though, despite all of what I said, we are evaluating remote learning programs for students with serious medical conditions. Our thought about that right now is that that would be a five-to-four process. We're still working on some of the details with that. The remote learning program most likely would be offered through BOSIs, and we're trying to work on a process that would identify those students. That being said, or all of this being said, there is, I'll share some of the feedback from the Town Hall that I did. There were concerns from some folks about universal masking. So some folks are really questioning that. There are also some folks concerned that we're not offering you full remote program. Again, it's sort of a complex thing to describe, but just sort of offering it to whoever wants it really puts us in a difficult position to do five days a week in-person education for the bulk of our students. Other feedback, people worried about, people worried about students wearing their masks appropriately. Should we add things to the code of conduct? Last year, most districts did not add masks to the code of conduct, so I think we're going to do a little bit of a wait-and-see with that. But we obviously, you know, really want to work with our students and take that seriously. And just, you know, just a lot of questions about the upcoming school year, just kind of nuts and bolts kind of questions. There were a lot of questions about contact tracing and quarantining, and some of that comes from the Health Department, and they're still working on some of their details. So we weren't able to get incredibly specific about that. So I do foresee more communications going home. We probably will do an FAQ as well. We may even do another Town Hall as we get closer to the school year. And I get it, anxiety amongst a lot of people for a lot of different reasons is high heading into this school year. However, we are putting everything into a safe return for all or almost all of our students, and we're very, very excited to kick this year off. And we will evaluate this plan and what we're putting into it every single day, if not multiple times a day. So this is something that we will work on, just like we did last year. Lastly, just about communication. I already mentioned we'll do more sort of preschool year communications with the community. The Zoom Town Halls have been a pretty good success. We're using a slightly different format for them, which makes it easier to do Q and A, which is great. And then throughout the year, we will email. I know there's some states that I guess are outlawing schools from doing this, which is crazy, but we will communicate if there's a positive case in a school. We'll communicate directly with parents if the child has had an exposure to that. We will keep the same level of communication that we did last year. So this is how we're starting the year. This is unfolding. We did have a really good productive meeting with representatives from all our units last week to go over this. We had a productive Town Hall. I felt, and one other thing I'd like to add, was it at the July New York meeting, our district physician? Was that when we? So we have a new district physician, Dr. Gary Rubenstein. He's from the, what is it, Wapageur's family primary? I can't remember the name of his practice, but he's, he has a family practice, and he is our new district physician, and we love him because he's already really engaged with us, and he comes to meetings, and he gives advice, and so he'll be helping. and he comes to meetings and he gives advice, and so he'll be helping us, uh, through this whole process. And so we're really happy to welcome him aboard. So, trying to go through that quickly, are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, um, how much concern did you pick up so far in going to the model where there's not availability of the remote learning as we had last year?
Uh, there's definitely some, I mean, I've received a handful of emails, I imagine I may receive more. Um, yeah, it's, it's there, for sure. I mean, I, I, I feel, I know our teaching staff feels this, like we really want to put the majority of our emphasis on in-person.
This is a BOSI's, uh, option, uh, could you elaborate a bit on that? I guess it's still in development?
It would be, it'd be based on the number of students at the secondary level. It would be, there would be a teacher checking in with the students on a daily basis, it would be more independent. At the elementary level, it'd probably be hiring a teacher for different grades and working with students. Um, we also, just as a preemptive thing, we did a, an anticipated posting for remote elementary teachers. In case we need to do it ourselves, we would use American Rescue, uh, Rescue Act money for that. Uh, but this is, I mean, this, what's challenging about this right now is, uh, without sounding, sounding whiny, there's been so little communication from the state and it's been fairly confusing. Uh, and then, you know, the rise of Delta, I think, has taken a lot of people back a little bit. That being said, um, we feel like our mitigation efforts are at the top level of any district in the area. Uh, we feel like we can do this safely, we feel that strongly. Um, and we feel, or we believe, doing a bifurcated model going into the year with teachers doing two things at once isn't a great way to start, uh, this year. In fact, it would be, uh, it would be really difficult for the teachers. Uh, so we're still, it's still in development, we could play a role in it in terms of maybe at the elementary level, if some of our, uh, some teachers we hire. Again, that would be rescue money as well. Um, but this is a fluid, ongoing situation, but we are putting our emphasis on in-person. As I, I, as I think almost every district is, from what I gather.
Any other questions for that?
Uh, just a quick shout out, uh, this Saturday, um, the, at the South Avenue Park, um, the I am Beacon, folks are doing, uh, uh, back to school, um, from 12 to 4 on Saturday, and, uh, they're doing a back to school, like, uh, school supply drive. And there's lots of activities that didn't happen last year because of COVID, so we're really excited to see that happen again. The rain date is Sunday, uh, 12 to 4 on both of those days, but, uh, it'd be great, I'll be there. Um, I'll be there to talk about opening or whatever people want to talk about, but there's a lot of different community organizations there and staff in the district, so it's a really great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, committee reports and board comments. Anthony, wait.
Um, the curriculum committee has not met since the last board meeting. Um, we're going to work on getting dates for that, and once the dates become available, I'll make them aware for the whole board. I have no other comments.
Thank you. Kristen?
Uh, the facilities, uh, operations committee is going to meet on Wednesday, uh, August 18th, I believe, that's the date. And, um, we are going to jump back into discussing the capital project. And, um, I just want to say thank you to Matt for the Town Hall the other night and all the planning that the, um, that Matt and staff and administrators have put into this coming school year. It's really good to have direction.
I'm simply going to bring my laptop over.
Is that us? Does it sound like?
Yeah.
Can we open it on Zoom or in person?
Uh, I don't think we tend to meetings on Zoom anymore, because that's part of the open meetings law.
Yeah.
Um, so it'll be in person.
Well, is Bill able to do that person?
I'm not sure, I haven't had that conversation, so maybe we can call Matt and try and help.
Yeah.
I mean, if we have to have Bill phone in or whatever, but I think we have to be in person.
Okay.
Um, thank you.
Greg?
No comments. No comments, I have. Is this one, yes? Okay. Uh, so one question is, um, the policy committee meeting, do you know, remember what date we set for that?
We did not set a date, I actually was going to send out an email tomorrow to all the committees, just trying to get that started, um, so, it'll be tomorrow.
Okay.
I suppose we'll do the same, you know, whatever we were doing, like, it was a Monday, you know, alternate.
Gotcha, okay. Um, second thing, second question I have, uh, so Matt's not in the room, but the, uh, the Staples in, on the, in Wapagers, which is like, Wapagers, Poughkeepsie border there, they, they ask their, uh, customers to donate, uh, school supplies and they're collecting a box of school supplies there. And they're looking for somebody, uh, um, some official from the district to come over there and, um, I guess, make some, either request or something, or what's in the box. I'm not sure who to refer them to, though.
Anthony, you want to send it to me?
Okay. Okay. You'll do. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, no comments, I, I will, um, work on getting the, um, HEPA relations meeting set up and ready now, since we're going to get that started.
Perfect. Thank you. And, um, other than, big thanks to everyone for pulling together for this hall. Thank you. Um, new business, we have a vote for the NISBA Area 9 Director position. Um, two school board members have been nominated, John Redmond from the Florida District and John Burns from Allenville. And we, um, have to send one vote for one candidate. So I would like to, I'm just going to, um, say the person in the order that it is on the agenda, ask who is in favor, and whoever gets the same votes, we will send. Are there any comments or questions about that?
I'm not sure I understand what, what you just said.
So, there's, there are two, um, people, and we can send a vote for one candidate, two, um, from our, from the entire board. So I was going to get the, everyone to vote for each candidate, and whoever got more votes would be the candidate that we send on.
Don't you want to do a nomination? Like, does anybody want to nominate and then you do?
Well, they've already been nominated, is my understanding, and so...
For MASA, who would be nominated?
Um, yes, but I was...
So like, I would make a motion to, uh, move John Redmond forward.
Okay.
And then there would be a second, and then you can have a discussion about it, and then if someone else wanted to make a nomination, you can open it up to somebody else.
Okay, that's fine. So, are you going to do that?
I'm making a nomination for John Redmond.
I'll second. Kristen, you seconded it.
Yeah.
Um, are there any comments or questions about that?
I would just like to point out that John has, uh, filled this role in the past. I feel that there's been no concerns with his, uh, performance as the role. I know that going to NISBA conventions, he has always represented the District 9 in a positive way.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So the Area 9 Director originally was Dorothy Slattery, I guess?
Before John Redmond?
No, well, I don't know what John Redmond's position was before.
He's, well, he's been, there is a letter from him, and he's, um...
Said he wasn't a committee or something.
He's been that position for the past.
He's, yeah, um...
It's 2000.
I remember voting for him.
It wasn't immediately previous.
Oh, yes, he was the immediate previous one, is that what you said? Okay.
So, did you have more of a question?
No, I was, I was, I was just wondering if there was some clarification on that, because website says someone else, so... But if he wasn't immediately previous, that's, that's my question.
Okay. Are there any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Uh, he sends regular reports, if you read the emails, and I appreciate receiving those and I find them useful.
Any other comments or questions? So, all in favor of...
Before you vote, I want to ask if there's any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Thank you, Anthony. Hearing none. All in favor of John?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Passes seven to zero. Thank you. So John Redmond is our vote from our school board for the Area 9 Director. Um, the next thing we have to vote on is the tax warrant, and this is a roll call vote. Kelly, you want to do that vote?
Um, oh, do we have to, sorry. Oops. The computer just went wacky. Um, do I have to read the whole name or? I just have a motion to approve the tax warrant for the 2021, '22 school year.
So moved.
Second, Kristen, seconded by Flora. Okay. Kelly, agree to vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yay. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. And the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered invoted unseparably, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board member would like to remove from the consent agenda? You want to say that?
Uh, 12.06.
12.06, any others? We have a motion to approve 12.01 through 1212.
Anthony, so moved.
Second. The second by Flora. I want some questions, questions?
Thank you to Marcia Freeman for the, uh, for the piano.
Any others?
Yeah, I just want to make a point of clarity that that doesn't include 1210 and 1211, because they were previously removed, correct?
Correct. Yeah, and at a state and the agenda. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven to zero. Um, can I have a motion to approve 12.06?
Moved.
Anthony, second.
I want some questions?
No, I, uh, this question for Mrs. Corderoni. Uh, everything here seems to be fairly routine, except for there's the big items, I believe we purchased some buses, is that right?
Yes, that was part of the proposition.
So that was under state contract, is that right? So the numbers there are exactly what was in, we were expecting, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we bought about three, three buses, was it?
Uh, those may not be all of the buses that were in the competition. So those, some of them came in now and some are coming at the end of the month.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification. Very good.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven to zero. Um, I just wanted to say congratulations and lots of gratitude to, um, Daniel Glenn, our New York principal at South Avenue School, and Vanessa DeFranz, our interim principal at the high school. Thank you. And, um, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved.
Second.
Anthony, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I, I can. Passes seven to zero, thank you very much.